Hello, welcome to the special joint meeting of the Planning and Transportation and Parking Commission, scheduled for Wednesday, March 7, 2018 at 5:00 PM. This is the proper place and time for this meeting. Roll call, planning commissioners. Commissioner Astorian.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Manukian.
Yes.
Commissioner Sarturian. And Commissioner Shabazian.
Yes.
We have a quorum of the planning commissioners. The Parkings Commission. Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Kurjian. Commissioner Kurjian has indicated that he's here. Commissioner Markarian. Commissioner Sahakian. And Commissioner Yakubian.
Here.
Commissioner Yakubian is here. Unfortunately, we only have two members of the Traffic and Transportation Parking Commission, or Transportation and Parking Commission, at this hearing. Therefore, the Transportation and Parking Commission does not have a quorum. The Transportation and Parking Commission portion of this meeting will now be adjourned due to lack of the quorum. We will continue then with the Planning Commission. And so I would turn it over to the planning chairperson.
Very good. So, report regarding the posting of the agenda, Ms. Soderbergh.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, February 28, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Excellent. So, we will follow Commissioner Shabazian in our pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
(inaudible) of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, what's in front of us is South Glendale Community Plan and its EIR, draft EIR, right? Who's going to be?
Correct. We have a tag team presentation.
Excellent. So...
I'll start.
Let's start.
This is the South Glendale Community Plan. We're here to take testimony on the draft environmental impact report. State clearinghouse number 2016091026. The app can is the city of Glendale. This is a draft programmatic environmental impact report. It has been prepared for the draft South Glendale Community Plan project. And the proposed draft environmental impact report is available for public comment from January 11, 2018, through March 12, 2018, at 5:30 PM. The draft proposed South Glendale Community Plan project includes amendments to the land use element and circulation element, a downtown specific plan amendment, boundary change, and amendments to the land use zoning ordinance and zoning maps that are deemed necessary to implement the South Glendale Community Plan. The DEIR and South Glendale Community Plan are both available for public review at the city's website. A copy of all the materials that you've received and any written material that's been prepared on this project is available on the city's website. Just search "City of Glendale," search for the draft South Glendale Community Plan, and you'll have links to all of the documents, the draft EIR, as well as all of the staff reports, and also the PowerPoint presentations. The purpose of this public hearing is to allow the Planning Commission and the Transportation and Parking Commission, although unfortunately they're not here, so this will just be actions of the Planning Commission to provide, and the public, to provide comments on the DEIR prepared for the South Glendale Community Plan project. What we will do is give an overview of what the plan is and what we're proposing, and then we will go into an overview of the draft EIR. And then you'll be able to take comments, not only from the commission, but also from the public concerning the draft EIR. Again, all the comments received at this hearing and also anything written received prior to Monday, March 12, at 5:30 PM, in the Planning Department, those will be addressed in the final environmental impact report to be prepared for the project. And with that, I'd like to give a start, a presentation with your permission, on the South Glendale Community Plan.
Permission granted.
And wait. Logistics. Can you turn up the light? Somebody can see it. Thanks. Wrong light. This is an overview of what the South Glendale Community Plan area is. It's the area of Glendale located south of the 134 freeway, and it also includes the downtown specific plan. You'll see the downtown specific plan actually includes a finger that goes out to Glen Oaks Boulevard. And at this time, we're making, or proposing no amendments at all to anything in the downtown specific plan that would be above Glen Oaks. I know we've had comments expressive concerns with that, so I just want to ensure that everybody's aware of that. So, what is the South Glendale Community Plan? It's part of a general plan, as any community plan is. It's, what we're looking at is a policy guide to our neighborhood and commercial district growth out to 2040. The purpose of having a community plan is to allow us to address changing and create sustainable land use patterns. As you're aware, our existing land use element of the general plan was adopted in 1977. It had an update for some of the multifamily zones back in 1986. And since then, we haven't had a major amendment to our land use element. So, by updating the community plan, it sets us in a good position to actually study the different neighborhoods that are all in South Glendale. The idea being eventually we will update the land use element, we'll use the community plan information to inform a land use element that we anticipate we would be doing next year. And I'll go over that further. One of the things that we are adding at a community plan that's not our land use now is how do we address community character? We have a large emphasis on design review, on urban design. If you look at Chapter 4 of the community plan, that's what it's devoted to. How do we make sure that we incorporate our policies at a general plan level into each individual project that goes in with, in a project area? And again, they are citywide policies, and it also addresses region-wide initiatives and also state initiatives, such as greenhouse gas reduction and sustainability. As a background, we had three council studies sessions back in July and August of 2016. Based on that, council identified the project that we are studying today. If you take a look at the maps behind you, the boards behind you, you'll see Alternative 3, that's actually the project that was directed by council. So, the alternatives are actually numbers that were back from 2016. They don't relate to the EIR today by those numbers. But that's what we were directed to study. I should point out that while the project is Alternative 3, in the EIR, it is known as the project versus Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. They also are addressed in the EIR, but those are project alternatives, and there'll be a description of those later. We had a DEI scoping session, it was a public meeting out in fall 2016, and the comments that we've received as part of the scoping session, those comments are incorporated in information that's provided in the draft EIR. We had a large public outreach meetings, a number of them, we had over 20 of them in fall 2016. Again, that information was used to inform not only the community plan, but also the DEIR. And now the DEIR, as I said before, is out for a 60-day public comment period. It is open for public comments until March 12, 2018, at 5:30 PM. I can't stress that enough. Any comment, if it's not provided orally here, then we request that you provide it in a written format prior to 5:30 on Monday.
And you can very easily do that on the city website.
Correct. You can submit written comments on the city's website. We have forms here. If someone wishes to fill it out, we will be happy to accept them tonight, or they can mail them in, as long as they're postmarked by 5:30 on a Monday. So, this is an outline of the council-directed project. I'll go over it in a minute. Actually, let me do it now. What we have as part of the council-directed project is the areas that are located in pink. You'll see this is the downtown specific plan area, any area along our corridors. These are the areas where we think we're going to see, not only, the DSPs already happened, so we're not looking at making changes there, but what we are looking at is looking at putting mixed use along our corridors, so that would be along Central. And then what really started this whole process is how do we deal with our train station, our metro link that's down there at the Tropico Center. We did a Tropico Center study originally. There's a copy of our map up there on one of the boards. That's the area that we focused on originally to get transit-oriented development policies, a lot of policies related to first mile, last mile, that we think we could spread throughout the city. Those policies, how do we do that infrastructure? That's what you'll see in Chapter 4 when you start looking at the individual neighborhood. So, we're trying to take our policies that we've learned, or direction that we've learned on how to address first mile, last mile, walkability, how do we make our communities more accessible, more livable? That's what we're focusing on from the TOD study, and we want to carry that in along our major transportation corridors, again, shown in pink. So, that's the area we're looking at is transform. That's where we really think we might see a change in the land use. Areas in the, kind of a orange color, we're looking at that area being an enhance. So, those are the areas where we think we might have some perhaps public, some public investment, a lot of looking at how do we make those areas more walkable, more accessible. We think we may have some development in there because we've changed the zoning in the past. We're not necessarily looking at making drastic changes in the zoning now. We're looking at more having policies to make those areas more livable and a lot of how do we make them look better and be more functional as a practical matter. The other thing we're looking at, and this is the vast majority, this is probably 80% of the downtown, of the South Glendale Community Plan area, that's maintained. These are areas where we do not expect a substantial change in anything. We're looking at perhaps maybe a 1% change in growth between now and 2040. We're not looking at substantial change, we're not proposing any changes to those zones. These are residential zones. One thing I would point out is we do have, and I will describe it a little bit later, we have the Adams Hill area. One of the things that we're proposing as far as our land use element goes is we're proposing a new land use designation that would be single-family hillside neighborhood. We don't have a designation that talks about single-family hillside neighborhood. A lot of policies for single-family hillsides were adopted by the city back in 1990, but they were adopted as zoning. There was not an amendment to put those policies in a general plan, and that's what we're seeking to do with that designation. So, if you take a look at the land use element proposal that we gave you, I would direct your attention there. But again, we're not looking at changing any zoning. And I would say throughout this whole area, we're not looking at doing any changing of zoning at this time, other than we have a handful of boundary changes. I think there's 21 properties that are along the boundary of the DSP. These are properties that council told us, they want to eliminate split zones. So, one of the things we're doing is you might have properties that are within the DSP and also properties outside owned by the same person, the same entity. We're looking at combining all of those within the DSP, so we have clear policy direction on what should happen on those properties. So, there is a list of those. Again, it's 21 properties, and I believe it's in the six areas. They're all directly adjacent to the existing DSP. We did get comments, they were concerned about, there was a proposal several months ago by the school district on the school district property, that property is not included as part of this proposal at all. And then the other issue I want to point out to you is, in the future, we're looking at having an affordable housing zone that would be within one block of our main, what we would look at in the future is our major transportation corridor. So, with one block either way on South Central and along East Colorado and along East Broadway. And so, we studied that. Again, we're not looking at changing it in the future, but the designation that we're looking at in terms of analysis is our 1250. That is our high-density residential zone, that's the same one we have right now. So, this would potentially, if the transportation is provided, then in the future, we would be looking at coming back and bringing a zone change to you. And again, this is a 2040 plan. It may happen sometime out in the future, but we are addressing it now in the environmental document. So, community plans, community plan provides a city-long-range plan that we did back in 2006. We've incorporated those policies, citywide policies, you'll see those in Chapter 3. And Chapter 3 is broken into 12 different issue areas. Not only do we have a description of citywide what those policies would be, but then there's a, in, a description of how those citywide policies would apply for each of those issue areas in South Glendale. We also have transit-oriented development policies. We included in one of the neighborhoods that we're, or districts that we're looking at as part of the South Glendale Community Plan is the Tropico District. If you take a look at the South Glendale Community Plan, you'll see in Appendix C that there is a whole Tropico plan that was given. We, city put together that plan along with Metro, and that's really a guiding, a policy guiding document for us and how are we, how did we craft the community plan. We also have an affordable housing overlay, I just went through that. We have minor changes in the DSP, and then also we do have six lots that are Zone C-33. C-33 height district is 90 feet, and we are proposing to reduce the height district down to 50 feet. That would make it same C-3, but the height district would be 50 feet. That's exactly what the neighboring zones are today. So, that is a zone change that we would be looking at doing. One of those six lots is actually developed with an apartment building. So, we would be looking at, again, making sure we have consistent zoning when you have single owner, the same ownership. We would be looking at making that in our 1250 zone, which would match the rest of the apartment building.
These are the Jackson Street and...
Exactly. It's, I think it's actually, I can't remember, it's Jackson or Isabella, but it's, right, exactly. I think the, our 1250, or our 1250 apartment is on Isabel. Part of the purpose of the South Glendale Community Plan, you'll see that in Chapter 5, there's an extensive number of projects that we've had going on in South Glendale since 1977. And so, what we did was we cataloged those different policy projects that the city has done. We've combined them. We want to have one document that coordinates all these different policy documents. That's why we have spent a lot of time adding a whole Chapter 5 to say, how are we using all our past efforts? How are we combining them so we don't lose all that past history that we've done? And you'll see that outlined in the report. Again, Metro grant-funded for the Tropico study, that's Appendix C. We have the EIR that we're doing. One of the reasons we have an EIR for this project today, the genesis of that was to adopt, to be able to adopt the Tropico study and transit-oriented development zoning down by the rails, the existing rail station, and also including the area that has our hospital. That's one of the major employers for the city. And so, that's really, we concentrated there first, and we realized these are the same transportation policies that will make our existing transportation network throughout the city more effective, and that's why you'll see an expansion of those transit lines. We also had efforts on the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, draft pedestrian plan, and those are also included as part of this project. You'll see recommendations on those plans that are included in the South Glendale Community Plan as well. And then, just in terms of background, back in 2016, we did, we did all our citywide land use data to get square footages for the different types of land use that we have citywide. We didn't have that data before. All the past plans were based on a different set of data, acreage, not square footage, so that's a large change for us. And then we also updated the city transportation model. The South Glendale Community Plan has not only the community plan, the land use element, I would point out that we have a regional and local transportation network too. As part of the Alternative 3 that we studied, you'll see that we looked at transit lines going in on Colorado and on East Broadway. That comes right from the metro. Are we going to have a bus rapid transit? That has been included in the study as a background data, assuming, again, these are not Glendale projects, but they're projects that affect Glendale, we've included that. We've also included potential light rail expansion or perhaps BRT expansion along the 134 freeway, that's also included. You'll see along, if you look at Alternative 3 on the map behind you, you'll see that there's purple stars. Those are areas where in the future, should that trans, the transit network be expanded, those are areas where we would look in the future at having stations to serve Glendale. And we're also including the streetcar?
Yes.
Streetcar. On the green line, that you'll see will be from the Transit Center, a brand all the way to the Burbank Airport. And so, there's a study out right now, or at least an RFP to do a study on that right now. And then the last group of, I would think of external projects that we have is high-speed rail and projects that are going on perhaps triple-tracking the rail. One of the issues we're looking at is not only high speed and grade separation, but we're also looking at potential that we might have local service as well as commuter service on the metro link in the future. And so, that's why you see a purple star that would be along Colorado. In terms of Tropico, there's a lot of projects, items from the study that we would want to include in Tropico. One of the things we're looking at is TOD and affordable housing, again, street design. We're looking at accommodating Glendale Memorial Hospital. We're also looking at that this area is a gateway to Glendale and also transit-oriented, not only development, but also perhaps open space. How do we make useful plazas and transit-oriented open space? For, as part of, as part of what are the transportation, because this is really obviously a transportation-oriented plan, what items are we also looking at doing? And you'll see behind you, they have some boards that talks about Alternative 1, 2, and 3, and I'll quickly go over what those are. These are all-inclusive. We're looking at maintaining neighborhood character, increasing walkable streets, we're looking at economic development opportunities, pedestrian safety, infill housing standards. We're looking at creating bike lanes or bike lane hubs, expanded transit service and amenities. And again, a lot of that is region-wide. We're, we need to figure out how are we going to accommodate regional projects within Glendale? So, these are not necessarily projects that are based in Glendale, but these are projects that absolutely have a potential to impact Glendale. So, instead of having the impacts without plan, we want to have plan for those impacts. We're also looking at transit-adjacent housing. Again, that would be not only in the TOD area in Tropico, but that would also be along Central and our other streets. Those would be our affordable housing areas that we're looking at studying. And again, that's the cross-hatched area that you see in Alternatives 2 and 3 that are on the boards behind you. And then just more, we want to have multimodal streets. We know that's a direction, not only regional-wide, but it's from the state. We're also looking at incorporating multiple transit centers, and we've looked at transforming opportunity sites, again, where you have areas that might be along our major corridors. Those are areas where we think, all right, if we're going to have enhancement of growth, that's where we want to have it, where we have the transit. And again, transit's king. When the transit becomes available, we would look at having changes in land use to follow, not vice versa. We also have Space 134. This is a separate project. It's accommodated in all the different alternatives that are part of the study, but we've, looking at perhaps having a freeway cap. There's a lot of discussion going on about that. Includes walking trails, event space, transit amenities. These are items that are also included in the study, and you'll see there's a description of 134. But again, that hasn't been finalized. We also have implementation actions. So, I want to, I want to make sure that you understand that this is really what part of the project is immediately, and then what we're looking at in the future, should this project be adopted, how are we going to build out? We have the first actions that would be adopted concurrently. We're asking that the EIR be certified. We're looking at doing a land use element, a circulation element immediately, because that would allow us to have a community plan in South Glendale. Again, in, back in 1977, back in 1986, we did not envision community plans. So, this is the reason why we would need to address that issue in our land use and circulation elements. We also have a South Glendale Community Plan adoption. You have the plan before you, either whole or in part, depends how planning, or the Planning Commission recommendation, and also what city council would, would take action on. And then we're also looking at proposing the downtown specific plan amendments and the zoning code map amendments. That would be one package that would all go to city council at one time. You will see those items when we take, when we have a final EIR and we take it to you for your recommendation. Then within six months of adoption of the South Glendale Community Plan, assuming council decides to adopt it, we would be looking at creating a transit-oriented development zone. There is a description of what that would be in the EIR, but it has not been drafted at that time. We're, we had an idea, this is what we'd like to include. We don't know what will be adopted. It kind of depends on what council direction will be, but that would be the first action, and that's because Metro gave us the grant to do the TOD study, the Tropico study, and they also gave us a grant to do the environmental review that we're doing right now. We're also looking at doing a small lot subdivision ordinance and small lot design guidelines. We'd started doing that a while back. We put it, we put it on hold because LA City had put a stop, and they were re-studying their small lot ordinance. It looks like they're now moving forward, so this would be, once, once the community plan is adopted, this would be a good time for us then to bring that back and start discussing that item, again, because that implements some of the housing discussions that are in the community plan. And then within one year of adoption of the community plan, we're looking at bringing forward mixed-use zone standards, should council give us that direction? And then we would also start the process in updating a new mobility element and land use element. As you are aware, transportation, mobility, and land use are intimately tied, and we've just put a lot of money into updating our land use and our transportation, our, the model. So, should council give us direction on this community plan, this would be the ideal time for us to proceed with doing a larger-scale amendment for our general plan. And that would be comprehensive. The one that you had, the one that we're proposing right now is just to allow adoption of a community plan. What we're envisioning is we know we need to redo our mobility element and our land use element. That would be a separate, it would be a separate action. Beyond one year, we're looking at considering adoptions, and these are, again, policy direction that we got back in 2016 from council. We're looking at creating perhaps parking lots and multifamily areas to leave some of the overcrowding on the multifamily on-street parking. We're looking at doing a safety element update. Looks like we're getting direction from state to do that. We're also looking at updating our Greener Glendale Plan to match the timeframe in this plan. We're looking at studying affordable housing overlay zone adjacent to transit corridors. Again, that would come following if we get that direction from council. And then we're also looking at study alternatives for small, a commercial small lot consolidation. And so, with that, that kind of gives an overview of where we are with the community plan, and now I'd like to turn it over to Eric to talk about the South Glendale Community Plan draft EIR.
Good evening, Commissioner Astorian and member, sorry, Chair Astorian.
I'm still the commissioner too.
Yeah, I got that, yeah. Okay. So, I'm just going to give a brief overview of what the, what the findings in the EIR are. I'm not going to go into too much detail and discussion, but I'll give you a brief overview of what some of the findings in the EIR are and what was looked at. So, this is a program-level EIR, which basically analyzes the larger envelope of the community plan rather than focus on one specific project. And some of the advantages of doing the program EIR is allows more of a streamlining environmental review. When you do have future projects, you can do addendums to this EIR, you can do NECDEX or mitigated NECDEX, tearing off the EIR. So, it kind of helps streamline the process for future development projects. It also allows the lead agents to consider broad policy alternatives and programs-wide mitigation measures that would be applied to further projects and give us some policy direction on how we want the city to develop further. And then it also, with the program-level EIR, ensures that we're considering cumulative impacts over the entire planner throughout the build-out. So, some of the actions that the EIR looked at in terms of what, what the project is under the EIR, initially after you'd have to certify the EIR first, then there's the general plan amendments, as Laura talked about, what land use element, circulation element, the actual adoption of the community plan, so if the council chooses to do so, and then amendments to the DSP boundary, and then corresponding zone changes is outlined in the plan. Some of the characteristics that were looked at in the EIR, I mean, essentially, it looked at all of the area in South Glendale, that's south of 134, and includes that little blurb of the DSP. And that's quite so approximately 3,000 acres of the city. And the plan looked at potential development of 10,337 new residential dwelling units in that southern part of the city, and 3.76 million square feet of non-residential development, which include commercial, office, those sorts of things. And then this would result based on a SCAGS use of 2.7 persons per household of additional 11,236 residents in southern part of Glendale by the year 2040. The environmental analysis looked at whether, which projects, which impacts would be significant unavoidable, generally because this is more of a policy-level document. It looks at more of a cumulative analysis over the 2040 and then the entire build-out. There were significant unavoidable impacts, both at the project level and cumulative impacts to aesthetics, and that's the degradation of the visual character, because we're, just the volume of build-out that could occur under the plan would just change how a proportion of the city looks. There's potential for new sources of shade and shadow impacts. And then the air quality impacts, like, that's pretty standard when you have development projects, especially at the cumulative level, where you start running into air quality impacts. There is greenhouse gas emission impacts, and it's primarily related to the program that we have now, the Greener Glendale Plan has never essentially evaluated as a, I think it's what a cap program. So, that's, because we don't have a cap right now, the project would result in greenhouse gas emissions, because we couldn't essentially equate whether or not we'd have impacts of that level or not, which is why that's one of the implementation measures as part of the plan to correct that issue. Population housing would be significant unavoidable, and that essentially, because the SCAG projections for the city of Glendale by 2040, the plan would exceed those SCAG projections.
By how much?
One second. Give me a second, I'll look that up real quick. Give me a second, I'll look that up real quick. So the, with the 10,337 units, the dwelling units that were equated for in SCAGs projections for this, for City Glendale by 2040, was 8,700. I don't know if anyone wants to do the math quick.
So it's by 5,000 if you multiply it by 2.7 per household.
Yeah, so it basically would get down to approximately 27,000 people under the, above what SCAGs projections were in, for the 2040.
Not 27,000, by 5,000. If the difference...
Yeah, the total would be 27,000.
Correct.
Above with 20,800 that SCAG projected. So roughly just over 7,000 additional residents. And then public services for cumulative impact on police and fire services, which is pretty standing when you see cumulative impacts on EIRs, especially one that's going build-out to 2040. Recreational impacts, there's not a lot, as everyone knows, there's not a lot of park space in southern Glendale. So we kind of would have the issue of the general plan designation of regional parks, which I believe is, for every thousand residents, you need six acres of park space, and we just don't have that in southern Glendale. So that's an issue for the additional residents. And then there are some proposals to have some kind of community open space, they're a little minor in the plan, that those could result in potential impacts, depending on how those are developed. And then transportation and traffic is always, you know, that's always seems to be an impact in most places. We looked at 50 intersections in the South Glendale Community Plan area. Of those 50, 27 could, would have impacts, could not be avoided. There are few mitigation measures that we could apply to some of those, and that results in 22 impacted intersections after mitigations applied to the project. So then the alternatives that were analyzed in the EIR with a no-project alternative, which is essentially just general plan build-out scenarios, under the current zoning and general plan, downtown tropical center plan, I think you're going to have to help me which one. In terms of the alternative one, two, and three?
Third.
Yeah, so that's alternative two under the draft EIR is, I mean, alternative two, I We can try to, as we kind of go through those things, we can try to figure that out. So the downtown tropical center plan would essentially, it's looking at implementing the Tropico TOD that was part of the grant, and that would be essentially the only change that would occur. You would have some change along Central as that plan kind of creeps up into that area a little bit. And then East Broadway, South Central Avenue development includes some of the changes in the mixed-use designations for the zoning code. So alternative one, or, excuse me, the no-project alternative, that equates to about 2,597 dwelling units under the current general plan by 2040, 2.47 million square feet of non-residential development with a population of 6,985. And then essentially, it would not lower any of these potentially significant impacts to lessen significant, but it would lessen seven of the different resource areas that were impacted, that being aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas, population housing, public service, recreation, transportation. So although the no-project would not obviously fulfill the objectives that were identified as part of the EIR. Alternative two is the downtown tropical center plan. That's between 5,400 and 7,400 dwelling units, which is equates to a 48% reduction below what the plan is anticipating, and 14,580 to 9,108 increase in population. So this would lessen one additional impact to a lesser level, but all these impacts would remain significantly unavoidable. That's aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, population housing, public services, and recreation. And so this, this one does, oh, Laura just told me that, alternative two under the EIR is alternative one map board here, and the alternative three is the alternative two map board.
And alternative three is the project up here.
Correct. Alternative three up there is the project, that's correct. So this one would meet most of the project objectives that were identified for the proposed project. It says two, it's just, it's just a smaller project essentially. So this is kind of like, this is the draft alternative two, which, the tropical plan, a little bit more development along, I believe that's Central, right? Yeah, and then at the DSP. So those are the areas that we're looking at that would transform under alternative two. So alternative three is the East Broadway, South Central Avenue development. That's 7,400 to 94 dwelling units, 19,000 to about 25,000 increase in population, and that would lessen some of the, five of the resourceers would be lessened by this impact analysis. So that's the aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, public services, and recreation. This one would meet most of the project objectives as well. So SEQA, here's the draft alternative three, which you can see that includes Colorado and Broadway as well as Central. And those, the pink is the transform areas under the plan. So the SEQA requires you to pick an environmental superior alternative that's different than the project. In most cases, it's usually a no-project, that's the superior alternative. However, when that's the case, then SEQA requires you to pick one of the other alternatives that's not the no-project. So in this case, it's alternative two, which would lessen the significant impacts the most out of the other two alternatives that were looked at. So in terms of the next steps for the SEQA process, the public review period does end on March 12th, and that's at 5:30. So comments should be sent to myself, and then we, as part of the written comments that we do receive, and we will, we will write down some comments we hear verbally tonight and address those as part of the EIR as well. But those written comments and the comments we hear tonight will all be addressed as part of the final EIR, and that will contain revised, any revised changes to the draft EIR, the comments that were, will be included, the response to comments, penises, and then we'll develop the mitigation monitoring reporting program as part of that. So when the final EIR is complete, then SEQA requires us to send the final EIR to any agencies that commented on the EIR 10 days prior to actually acting on it. So as part of the next steps, because we do have significant unavoidable impacts, the, we need to make findings and statements of overriding considerations for the Council to consider if they chose to approve the plan. And so the City Council here, and they'll evaluate and certify the EIR, they'll consider the findings of statement overrides, and then a decision on the project will be done at that time through resolution and ordinances. And then we'll have to prepare the notice of determination, which is within five working days of the actual decision. And then that starts the 30-day appeal process through the court system on the EIR. Couple of things I wanted to point out real quick. So we do have the EIR consultant here, Atkins is the EIR consultant, they're in the audience as well as our traffic consultant from Fair and Peers. If there's any kind of questions about basic, how some of the analysis was conducted. But as Laura mentioned, we do have comment forms by the door that people can take home or film out here tonight and leave them. So right now, we're not, in terms of, we'll answer basic questions about the process and what's in the plan, but we will not be responding to any comments we hear tonight on the draft EIR. That will all be done as part of the final, so no responses to those particular comments, but we will answer the questions that the Council, Commission, or the public has on the process and that sort of thing. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
And I would like, I would like to also add that we do have two members of the Transportation and Parking Commission who are here, who may wish to provide individual comments. Obviously, it wouldn't be comments on behalf of the Commission, but individually, they have also reviewed the EIR, and they may have comments on the project as well.
So before we do that, are there any questions or stuff? Are you done, Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Shain.
Yeah, I just have one comment, just for housekeeping purposes. Figure 3.2 and 3.3, figure 3.2 is correct. I think figure 3.3 has the neighborhood swapped. So that's something that you probably want to correct, that's in the front. And, you know, this is a question, I guess, you know, in your EIR report, you do identify all this impacted area, whereas the fire police, the traffic, and also Wreckin' Park. But there's nothing identified as far as mitigating measures, so when does that come up?
Well, the mitigation measures that are feasible have all been included in the EIR. So there are mitigation measures included in the various sections, and then that's what the Council will then have to determine whether or not there's additional measures that they think they could add, that sort of thing that would help mitigate some of those. But the ones that are currently proposed are all included in the EIR, and those are the ones that we determined were the only feasible mitigation measures to reduce some of the impacts.
And I think you already explained it, but one of the confusing things was that when you had option one, two, and three, and what I read from the report, you know, I got confused, but I think you explained it. So option three here is, is the project itself.
That's correct. Thanks.
Any other questions? Let me, Mr. Kraus, if you can go back to the slide about the alternative and SEQA, I think that's the one. So alternative number two would result in the greatest reduction of environmental impacts amongst all of these alternatives.
Yes.
And alternative number two is the tropical or is it the East Broadway?
It's the alternative one that you would see behind you.
Okay. And, and now let's talk about some of the numbers, as far as dwellings, dwellings and in alternative number two. How many dwellings and how many 2.7 per dwelling, what, what are we looking at, increase in population?
Yeah, so the, the EIR looked at between 5,400 and 7,400 dwelling units in this alternative, and that would equate to 14,580 additional residents to, actually it's backwards, actually, it would be 9,980 and then 14,580.
Got it.
When you say 28% reduction, that's compared to what?
And compared to what's in the proposed project.
Project.
Yeah. Which would be the five, that's obviously the 40, 5,400 is a 48% reduction on the 10,337.
Okay. Very good. If there are no other questions, I'm going to go to the public. I'm going to start with, and give some deference to the two Commissioners that are here, so we can hear their points of views. I'll start with Ms. Yakubian. And then of course, Mr. Kirkjian, right after. What's customary, Laura, for a, for a plan, five minutes or 15?
Customary is five minutes, but you may establish whatever time you would like.
Ms. Yakubian, you have the deck?
Well, thank you very much. I would like to be speaking to you tonight as Chairman of the Transportation and Parking Commission. Unfortunately, or fortunately, now I'm speaking to you as a resident, perhaps I can let some of my passion come through a little bit more. This plan to me is unacceptable. And generally speaking, I'm just going to say, I think it is giving another self-inflicted wound to Glendale. We tried this out with the DSP. We did a lot of development, and things aren't going as smoothly as we had anticipated. From, there's a couple of areas in the EIR that concern me. The first being impact 4.13-4. Implementation of the proposed project would increase the demand for police protection services and would potentially require the construction of new or physically altered facilities to accommodate the increased demand as no feasible mitigation is available. Impacts to police protection services would be significant and unavoidable. I think that's huge. Okay, we're not going to be able to provide, and there's no solution to be able to help with proper protection services for the increase of population. The next thing that concerns me would be the EIR 4.15-5. And from a transportation point of view, this concerns me as well. The implementation of the proposed project would, according to the EIR, would conflict with an applicable congestion management program, including but not limited to level of service standards and travel demand measures, or other standards established by the County Congestion Management Agency for designated roads or highways. What appears to be happening in my mind, and it's again very concerning, is we're putting in all of this development, and we have it as 2040. But let's be realistic, looking at the implementation plan, running concurrently or within a year of the implementation of the plan, you have approvals for, you know, subdivisions, you have new land designations, you have everybody coming to the city like it's 1849 in San Francisco, looking for a land grab and looking to make a lot of money in this, in this area. This is a beautiful area of Glendale. And I'm afraid, and I want to use this, this term in the most respectful way, but to understand my concern, I don't want to make this beautiful area of Glendale a ghetto. And I don't want to make it thickly populated, and that's exactly what we're doing, making it thickly populated and then not providing the level of service you need. And then you're assuming with all of this, that by bringing a ton of people into South Glendale to live, they're going to just decide one day to, oh, I'm going to take the bus. To me, we're doing it backwards. To me, I feel like the most important thing we should be doing before we make these major changes is to address the quality of life that's currently existing in Glendale. We have a pedestrian, citywide pedestrian plan that's outstanding. I'm, I'm really looking forward to the city taking that plan and start implementing some fabulous measures that were laid out in that plan. But the way I see this plan going, it is a disaster. I don't think it's going to take until 2040 for that area of Glendale to be completely bombarded with overdevelopment, and I'm, I'm completely against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kirkjian.
Thank you for this staff for wonderful presentation, all of you. Chairperson Storian, thank you. I don't, want to repeat what Chairperson Yakubian said. I'm here on behalf of myself, not on behalf of Transportation and Parking Commission. Let me just highlight something from transportation standpoint of view to all of you. Glendale, unlike neighboring city of Pastina, for example, it's a triangle. We do not have perfectly lined east-west turf hairs like Pastina does on north-south, such as New York, Washington, Orange Grove, Colorado, in Pastina, perfectly lined up, or north-south, Lake, Fair Oaks, Hill, Allen, they're all perfectly lined up. We do not have that luxury in Glendale. The only two streets where we have east-west, which are not parallel, Glen Oaks and San Fernando, and north-south, we have Pacific Central, Bryant, Glendale, and Verdugo, which, again, they are not perfectly parallel. It's a transportation nightmare which we're creating by having this many units. Furthermore, I appreciate the forward-thinking and pro-development in Glendale. We love development. I'm a developer. We want to develop responsibly, and we don't want to give any developer parking exemption or reduce parking standards. They want to build, fine, but everyone build meeting parking requirements. And any developer that wants to build any building, apartments should come, including with rent. They should not be charging per rent to future residents. So many of the issues which were heard before us in the Commission was as parking, as congested streets. The streets are congested due to lack of parking space uses or parking uses, especially in South Glendale. Everyone's renting their parking, parking garages, or they're parking their corner streets. If parking, if all the parking is off the street, there's going to be a lot more free space on the streets. This goes both for, for mixed-use cases, for residential and non-residential uses. Also, when the parking issue comes up, there are a lot of CUPs out there that, they're operating, businesses that are, you operate under CUPs. There'll be more parking issues and more, more traffic issues, though people may lose their businesses based on that, because there will be legal non-conforming. Additionally, bike lanes. We are, we want to take out street lanes to put in bike lanes. What I suggest is whenever a developer comes in, ask for street dedication to accommodate for bike lanes. Our example is Colorado streets in Eagle Rock. It speaks for itself. I have an aunt who resides at Aurora Tommy Eagle Rock, and every time I come off the parking lot, make a right turn, I am in the parking lane. And for me to come towards Glendale to Wilson, it's very confusing, and did not help businesses in Eagle Rock on Colorado. Let's use that as an example. Also, with regards to public transportation, right in front of us here at Broadway and Glendale Avenue, many times we see where buses are parked, there are two buses going, for example, east on Broadway, they pass Glendale Avenue and both of them are parked. There'll be third bus waiting in front of the courthouse. If we accommodate some kind of a carve-out for these buses, it'll be great as a future development, because public transportation will be used a lot more often as we go forward. The reason I state that, because bikes are... The reason I state that, because bikes are used more often, and these buses, they have bike racks in the front, and if, they need more time for these bikes to be put on and off, these bike racks, and we don't want that to create additional traffic on the streets, if you will.
Mr. Kirkjian, if you can wrap it up, we would appreciate it. The yellow light just came on.
Let me finish up by saying, I just came from New York last night, and the widest subway use in the country, I believe, is New York, and you can get to places by subway quicker than your own car. And I don't think we have that luxury of having it in Glendale, that kind of public transportation. People are still going to use their cars, and let's try to avoid congestion by giving parking and not giving up our street lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jennifer Barrios?
I'm, my name is Jennifer Barrios. I live in the Mariposa area, or southeast. I didn't expect to go first, I actually came to this meeting to learn about these projects, it's the first I've heard of them. I actually just wrote, just in case I heard something, I actually didn't, I've learned quite a bit, but I'd love to see some more information on this, which I'll be researching after this meeting. But the reason I even wrote anything was, my concern so far with my experience in this room, in our neighborhood, in the GCC area, is that there's absolutely no parking, there's no parks, I mean, there's a couple that are kind of walking distance on either side. There's two elementary schools, a junior high, a junior college and a hospital, all in that area. And the projects in my neighborhood that are being built are ridiculously huge, and when I see the numbers of the population growth that you guys are expecting from these projects, it's terrifying, it's absolutely terrifying. It's dangerous for our children, it's not safe for our neighborhoods. And the projects that are being built, like the one on Adams around the corner from me, the one on Acacia, the one on, right off of Mariposa, there's three projects, they're building huge, demolishing homes and building apartments. They come in here, I heard somebody say to make sure we have enough parking, but they come in here asking for variances, variances for green space, because they don't want to offer green space, variances for parking, because they want to offer less parking. And, and those kind of things are absolutely ridiculous. When I hear the Transportation Board say that these things are not feasible, that's, I hope you guys take that to heart, because I've seen these buildings go up in the neighborhood. My son goes to school in the Edison area, in the Pacific area, and I've seen office depot be depolished, or building something massive and ugly. They put something at the bottom of Edison, massive, it's off Pacific and San Fernando. That area is a nightmare, nightmare, because there's a community center there, there's a library there, there's no elementary school there, and it's dangerous, dangerous for all, almost 1,000 children that attend that school. So, whatever thought you guys are putting in, put it in now, because it hasn't been put up, put in up to this point. The, the walking area, the parking spaces availability, even just parking on one side of the street or the other, permit parking, anything, anything you guys can do to relieve that, that would be helpful. I'd like to hear board members that actually live in our neighborhood, you know, we don't have the luxury like the Verdugo corridor up near GCC main campus, those beautiful houses that have tons of parking. When I first moved to Glendale, more like 15 years ago, they told us that 50% of the population already existed below Colorado. And it sounds to me like you guys are trying to add to that, and that's, again, terrifying. So I really hope you take that, take that to heart. And that's all I have to say. I look forward to hearing my neighbors speak on behalf of that. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Matt Dixon?
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak on the plan. I live on Wilson Avenue, just north of Broadway, so I live right adjacent to one of the corridors that are, I think, enhanced under the proposed alternative. I think this is a really good plan, and I encourage you to support it. I think it builds on the success of the downtown specific plan. You know, you look at downtown, there's so many more businesses, there's so many more people walking around now, it's great. You look at Glendale compared to other cities around here, people want to come to Glendale, I think it's, I think it's wonderful. You know, the downtown specific plan has gone a long way towards helping meeting our housing needs. You know, the whole region has a housing shortage, and Glendale is, Glendale's doing its part. I think that's great, and I think the South Glendale Community Plan can help build on that. You know, people, people want walkable places, people don't want to be stuck in traffic, you know, people don't want to commute from Palmdale down here every day. You know, my walk around, I see all this, all this traffic on Brand in the afternoon. That's not people that, that live in Glendale, that's people who live somewhere else and have to drive here, and are stuck trying to get on the freeway in the afternoon. You know, so let's, let's give more people the opportunity to live in a walkable place where they can walk to all the great things on, on Brand Boulevard and in the Americana and the Glendale Galleria. I think, you know, when we do sequel, we always like, the best possible option we give ourselves is no impact, but I think there's a lot of positive things that can come out of this plan, too. You know, like, in terms of greenhouse gases, infill development is so much better than having people drive like, you know, 40 miles down the freeway every day to go to work. That's good for, you know, shade, even shade is good, too. Like I said, I live in, I live in Wilson, and I walk up to Brand and the Americana all the time. You go out in the summer, and then people are like, people are hugging the, the sides of the buildings, trying to find, trying to find shade. You know, so even that can be a positive impact sometimes. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Meek?
Good evening and thank you. I appreciate the other speakers. I wanted to bring up, the transportation proposals in this need to be implemented prior to all this construction to make sure that they work. If you're going to have these infills, you need to have the buses, the trains and everything actually working so that these people have a reason to come here, and not say, wait, wait a minute, I still need my car. And that seems to be the reason we want to do these infills, is to encourage people not to drive. So, that's one of my main things. Park space, South Glendale, I know it's a real issue, and it's really hard to do, but it really needs to be addressed, to find some parking, some park, open space, not a passeau, but a real park, whether it be big or small, to accommodate all these people. And my final thing is, police and fire department. They're both sort of understaffed already. The fire department says they aren't meeting their goals of how soon to get to places. With these new apartments and stores and things, we will definitely need to increase or somehow up the staff of these things so that we can actually continue to have such great police and fire that we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lorna Vertanian?
Chair historian, members of the commission and staff. I wish I had Ms. Yakubian's energy, but I'm going to read. I'm Lorna Vertanian, president of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association. The results of the EIR being considered tonight confirm that the quality and level of growth being proposed for our city is unacceptable and inappropriate. This EIR openly identifies seven quality of life categories: aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, population and housing, public services, recreation and transportation, which will be impacted at the level of unavoidable and significant with no proposed mitigation measures. We are looking at a blueprint to build without the infrastructure to support it. We are creating transit-oriented development without the appropriate transportation in place. And this is confirmed by the numerous instances where the EIR states that expected impacts due to increases in vehicular traffic cannot be mitigated, an open admission that car traffic is not going away. For example, the following three intersections on Page Six, Section 4.15, currently operate at a level of service of F during peak hours and will get worse. There are Pacific Avenue at the 134 westbound, Pacific Avenue at the 134 eastbound, and Glendale Avenue at Monterey Road, an intersection at the entrance to the Rossmoyn neighborhood. Excuse me. In addition, the year 2040 proposed project intersections in Table 4.15-9 on Page 29 indicate that. Brand at Los Feliz was rated B in 2016 during the AM peak hour and is rated F by 2040. The same intersection during the PM peak hour was rated C in 2016 and is rated F by 2040. San Fernando Road at Los Feliz was rated C in 2016 during the AM peak hour and is rated F by 2040. The same intersection was rated E in 2016 during the PM peak hour and is rated F by 2040. There are 22 intersections for which no feasible mitigations are identified. Nothing in this EIR or the community plan can guarantee future transportation or the funding for that transportation from Metro or anywhere else. There is also no timeline that manages at what pace the growth will occur, and whether or not housing will be built at the same pace as transportation. In other words, all of the buildings could go up before anything is in place to mitigate our already congested streets and failing intersections. The community is already unhappy with what has happened within the soon-to-be expanded boundaries of the DSP. This over-aggressive plan is unacceptable, and it must be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Nayra Sukbatia?
My name is Nayra Sukbatia, and I'm a resident of South Glendale and a board member of the Park Central Homeowners Association. I represent over 90 Glendale residents. The past year's mega developments in the downtown specific plan area, which is part of South Glendale, have already adversely affected the quality of life of our community. The roads have become overcrowded, public street parking and parking lots became scarce or eliminated, open spaces and parks have disappeared, rents have greatly increased, and the people of Glendale have experienced a housing crisis. Unfortunately, the crisis will deepen since many similar mega projects have been approved and are, and are on the way already. We have already experienced how disastrous the mixed-use buildings are, where mega developments are built on narrow streets, one lane each direction, where street parking becomes eliminated and instead parking permit districts are designated, creating financial and administrative burdens for the public, where only a few affordable units are provided in those buildings and absolutely no market-rate units are provided, and where those first-level businesses do not have sufficient parking even for their customers and further aggravate the parking shortage for the Glendale residents. The EIR identifies seven impacts, including aesthetics, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, population, housing, public services, recreation and transportation, which directly affect the mental and physical health of Glendale residents and even jeopardize their safety in terms of the public, public services. And I want to mention that there are no feasible mitigating measures even with alternative one, as we heard today. Therefore, I would urge you to mandate the community planning department to reconsider the Glendale development objectives in light of the interests of the community and not the developers, to discard, to reject the proposed South Glendale community plan, and to develop a new one addressing the community needs for more recreational facilities and parks, more open space and parking lots to counterbalance the current needs of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Catherine Jurka?
Good evening, Chair historian and members of the planning commission, and, well, I guess the members of the traffic commission have left, and staff.
They're caught in traffic.
My name is Kathy Jurka, and I, I live in North Glendale, but I think about Glendale, and I think about all parts of Glendale a lot, and I'm concerned about the future of the city as a whole. By this point, I have looked at a lot of environmental impact reports, mostly these are for private developments, where the developer has hired the consultant, and I approached the EIR with a very jaundiced eye, because I expect that the developer's probably found a consultant who's going to tell him or her what they want to hear. That's why this EIR was such a refreshing change, because it was really upfront about what the problems with the, the project are. As you've heard, seven substantial impacts that cannot be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. That is huge. These are really fundamental quality-of-life issues that are going to affect my neighbors, members of my community, and my friends who live in South Glendale. And I want to remind you that the baseline for measuring what counts as an unmitigable impact is not what Glendale was like in 2000, it's what Glendale's like now, where we've already had so many adverse impacts as a result of the huge numbers of units and the substantial development that's gone on in, as part of the downtown specific plan. I understand that there are advantages to growth, but there are a lot of problems that come with it, too, especially when it's coming at the pace that it has in Glendale, and as one of the previous speakers pointed out, without the necessary infrastructure to make that happen. I've heard from people who live in South Glendale about the dearth of park space, and as someone who lives in North Glendale, I felt actually kind of embarrassed about how much of the development impact fees went to parks in my part of town, where we have a really quite ample park space and certainly much larger yards as part of the, of the housing. I think park space is something, I don't think that plazas and kind of paved open spaces a part of new development is going to cut it. I know people are very concerned about transportation and traffic. I spent a lot of time in South Glendale recently, and I'd heard anecdotally about how terrible parking there was. I had no idea, until I was driving into the neighborhoods. I mean, that really is a hardship. They complain about parking in my neighborhood, I tell them, forget it, you don't know what you're talking about. I also, I, I'm concerned that the transit-oriented development around the rail station is treating it as though it were light rail and not MetroLink. I just went on to the MetroLink website today. Between 11 o'clock in the morning and 8:45 at night, when it stops running, from Glendale to LA, there are 15 trains a day. That is not going to compel anyone to leave their cars behind, nor is a rapid bus service. We have a rapid bus on Broadway, I take it sometimes to get to Hollywood to meet my partner. Let us say, it is completely underutilized, and I don't think adding, adding more is really going to take a big dent out of our transportation and traffic issues. The last thing I wanted to point out is, I'm sort of interested in this small lot ordinance, because it's not actually part of the EIR, but is a plan to, that would be put in place or developed, I guess, six months after the South Community Plan is accepted. This would further increase density. It's taking lots that currently have single-family houses and building three or four townhouses on a smaller lot. And I think it's really a shame that this was not considered as part of the EIR, because it's, it's, again, going to be further impact that should be taken into consideration. So, I, you know, if, if Glendale was still stuck in 2000, I might be willing to say, you know, we, we should move forward with maybe not the full plan, but a more ambitious plan, but I have to say that, along with some of the people who've spoken, I am in support of, of no project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Are there anybody else, or is there anybody else that would like to? There, okay, so we'll wait for that person, and then as a process, Ms. Dotler, right after we've heard from the public, we'll close the public hearing, or we leave it open?
You would close the public hearing, but if you have any additional comments from the commission, we would definitely want to hear your comments as well regarding the draft EIR, if you have any.
While the public hearing is open.
While the public hearing is open.
I'll take your card.
Oh, thank you.
You arrived at the right time, so you can have the podium.
Oh, no. Okay.
Right over there.
The other way, but sorry about that.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lutin Sukbatia. I am a resident here in Glendale area for over 10 years. I'm a owner of some apartment buildings, I mean, not buildings, sorry, apartments, and I'm a physician, I practice in medical field. So, the reason I'm here is because I'm very concerned about the building of new buildings, apartment complexes here, and the reason is obvious, because it will increase the pollution, it will increase dust exposure, it will increase noise, and it is very hazardous and very unhealthy. And it is very hazardous and very unhealthy and unsafe environment for our little kids, elderly, and our community. And I really hope that the city will consider our great concern before approving this project, considering our well-being and safety. And it's not just my opinion, but also the opinion of our neighborhood. Unfortunately, they couldn't be here. That's all, just to keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Randi Werner? We move quickly around you.
I guess so. Wow, I'm impressed. So, I've been reviewing the plan and I'm alarmed by it by several reasons, that the plan has pointed out in several measures that will create significant and unavoidable harm to the city of Glendale. So hopefully, our leaders will look at this plan very carefully as well and not do harm to the people of Glendale. So I realize they wanted to pick the most aggressive plan just to see what's the worst-case scenario, but hopefully, they'll be rolling that back to find a plan, even if they have to start over, that doesn't lessen the quality of life so dramatically for the people of South Glendale and actually throughout Glendale, especially things like water conservation and air quality, in particular, the impacts on traffic. And then also, it seemed a little confusing that they're rolling the bicycle plan into that, even though that plan hasn't been voted on yet. And it looked like that plan was just going to make things go from bad to worse as far as levels of service at intersections. So a lot of them going from E to F or D to E or D to F, you know, that sort of thing. So it almost looks like the plan is to make driving so horrendous that people leave their cars at home. And it doesn't really take into account that this is commuter hours and these are people that are coming here to work. I don't think most people have a workable option. It seems odd also, and I've said this in other meetings, including the work boot sessions, that we're talking about transit-oriented development when the city of Glendale doesn't have a decent transportation system. It's not integrated. It's not high-quality. There, you know, to point at Amtrak as though that's a viable option for people to get around Glendale or to Glendale when it's primarily people going through Glendale seems disingenuous at best. And so it seems that they should pause this completely, develop decent transportation systems, and then talk about transportation development. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any comments from the commissioners or questions for the staff?
I have a question and then I have a few comments. I was wondering how many, I know that you mentioned earlier how many public outreach meetings we had, but I was just wondering if you could repeat that.
Yeah, we have had a number of public outreach. We've had a number of public outreach meetings. I know we've identified it in the community plan. Let me find that page.
These were mostly in July, June, July of 2016, if I'm not wrong, right?
Right. We've had a number of different projects that we've looked at and those have each had, over the years, in South Glendale. But those have been looked at individually. None of them were coordinated. So when you look at all those individual efforts, you've had a substantial amount of public outreach. And that's outlined in Chapter Five. But we did have a number of outreach meetings that we did have following. We had public outreach meetings and meetings with the council when they just, they took a look at the different alternatives and gave us direction on what they wanted us to study in the EIR. After they gave us that direction, we had a scoping meeting with the public. And then we also went out and had a number of meetings with the public. And I just don't remember, I know it's in here. Let me find the page.
While she's, Laura's looking real quick. I made a point of clarification regarding the bicycle plan. That's already kind of part of the background data, I believe. And if I'm speaking out of tune, these guys can correct me. But what we did include was the pedestrian safety plan as part of the South Glendale plan. And the purpose for that is that ultimately, the timing on that, that became a related project under CEQA. So we had to include that as part of the EIR. So the pedestrian plan is included in the southern part of Glendale.
Yeah, and where a public outreach is, it is in Chapter Five, but it's on 5.2 Plan Timeline. If you're looking at the pages in the community plan, it'll be 5-4 and 5-5.
Thank you. I'll look at that. And so can I give my thoughts about the plan?
Of course.
I'm just looking at, this is a planning perspective. And there are a few things that I wanted to mention that I noticed. First was lack of open space. That portion of the city is already lacking open space. And it seemed that, looking at the plan, that there was still, there's still, that is still missing as we proceed. So that the open space designation needs to be addressed. Another thing that I noticed that I wanted to mention, and some folks brought it up, was police and fire. I'll just talk about fire, maybe putting a designation, a civic center designation on the plan that has a civic center or civic designation for land use for the future possibility of putting a fire station. That was one thing. And this is not for the plan, but just over, in general. Bringing back the review process for the downtown specific plan to commissions, because right now, the process is in a way that it goes directly to council and it doesn't get the exposure from all the commissions. I think that would help the developments to be developed in a way that if there are any issues or any concerns, the commissions can recommend to the council. That's something I think that we can speak more about. It's not something that's, of course, in a specific plan, but I think it's something that will help the development and the project in a long process, in the next twenty-two years and so on. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners? So, Ms. Stotler, I have a couple of questions and followed by some comments. You referenced an affordable housing overlay, but that was also peppered with a block delineation of Colorado and Central and Broadway?
Yes, because that's, those are the streets where we are expecting to have an increase in our transit service. So not only is part of the BRT. At the time we were putting together this project, the, I think it was Prop 26, where they're looking at the different transportation projects that we were going to be having in LA region. That was on the table. It wasn't adopted at the time, but it was on the table. And it was looking at that timeline. Metro was looking at putting that on East Broadway. At the time, our city manager said, no, study it on Colorado. We looked at both, and that's why you see it on the alternatives. And then now we're hearing that perhaps BRT is also being considered along the 134. So again, you have, these are regional plans that will have an impact on Glendale. It's still in flux. We don't know where it'll go. There's independent studies. But I would point out that part of the reason we're doing this, part of the reason we're doing this community plan is we know that we have these large regional projects that have a potential to have an impact on Glendale. How do we plan for them? What does that mean for us? That's part of the reason why we're doing an EIR. It's part of the reason why we're doing a community plan. And we know we're going to need some sort of policies to address that. Most of the policies that you see in our community plan are related to individual neighborhoods. But in terms of the EIR, we have addressed what could happen in the areas. And Ms. Yurka was absolutely correct. It's not a, perhaps, a pretty picture, but we think the EIR is accurate. It's a disclosure document. We want to disclose what the potential is for this plan. And again, we were directed to study this plan. It is perhaps the most intense plan that could happen. But we want to, we wanted to have it disclosed. We wanted to have it studied. We wanted to know what our options are and what we may be facing. And again, it wouldn't happen tomorrow, but it is a 2040 plan, just like all the regional plans that we have, not only Glendale's, but SCAG plans and Metro plans and including the plans for regional transportation expansion. So whether it'll happen today or not, we don't know. In terms of putting affordable housing, well, if that's where we, at the time, we were looking at putting that bus expansion, we wanted to have any kind of density run along those lines where transit would be going. And so you're asking, why do we have it in that area? That's why.
I was just questioning if, we're not inferring that that's the only area affordable housing can go in?
No. And again.
Thank you.
Our plan is based on transit. This is obviously a transportation-based plan. And so that's why we're looking at housing based on where the transportation would go.
I understand. So the numbers without any project, with a no project are 2,587. It's interesting how accurate this is and which would yield 6,985 residents addition, whether we like it or not. That's what's going to happen by 2040, at least this is a projection, versus a full-fledged project, which is in front of us, which is 10,300 and yielding 27,000 residents. And somewhere in between, whatever the other alternative is. We are living in a state that last year passed somewhere close to about fifteen different legislation ordinances and so forth for affordable housing. I believe this EIR, regardless of the level of the project that the city council will certify or will approve, is light on addressing this issue, affordable housing. And one of my suggestions is that if we are going to visit that, which I hope the EIR will be able to address it, you will be able to actually state what a low-income housing, what a moderate-income housing, and what, let's just say, workforce-income housing would require as far as AMI is concerned. We need to be a little bit more direct with that. Because I believe that now is the time for this EIR and for this city to start considering, again, regardless of the level of the project or which alternative we choose, inclusionary housing. That is the only way you will be able to get housing developed by folks that are developing these units. Now, you've got to incentivize it. There is no questions about it. And that's a discussion for a different day. I believe the city has already commissioned Kaiser Martson, is it? To do a study on affordable housing and inclusionary housing, Mr. Kraus?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I'm not sure of the firm, but it has been commissioned to start looking into that.
So that's something that definitely needs to be addressed. On your EIR 412.1, and how to do population housing in the EIR section of it, it is of utmost importance that this city council and our neighbors hear that affordability is a huge issue. I mean, it's a statewide issue. Folks are paying 50% of their income for rent. Unless we address this, we are behind, we are always going to be behind the eight ball. Now, when downtown specific plan was adopted, it created. It did its job. It created. And I know there are folks that were dead-set against it, but it created what it did. It needed to. Now we need to change course. And our attention should go towards affordable housing and how you can make that possible, how you can incentivize that. I want to jump to Appendix B, Section Two, I believe. And this has to do with the Historic Resources Survey? That is part of your South Glendale community plan, right?
Yes.
I watched the Curf Alphol last night at the council meeting on Myrtle Street apartments or Myrtle Street property. First question that I have is that anywhere between, depending on the numbers, 400 to 680 properties are being impacted. Or would be between five as three, and I don't mean to get too technical. That means Mr. Platt will definitely jump in and let us know what that means. It means that, I believe, may be eligible for historical considerations.
Yes.
It is of utmost importance, as a private property advocate, that these folks that own these properties are brought under the tent so they understand what the ramifications are. They need to know. You have come in with this EIR with full disclosure for the city of Glendale that, look, some parts of this thing is not going to look pretty. You need to do the same thing with the historical survey that you have. In other words, we have to do an outreach for folks that own these properties. If for nothing, at least we will be able to avoid issues that we've had, like the one that we had last night. Same thing with zone changes. And I know, you know, there were only a few, but you need to reach out and let them know. Now I'm going to go back again to affordable housing. As I said, about fifteen measures were passed by the state of California last year. The big one that is coming up is the Senate Bill Eight Twenty-seven. And I would encourage everybody to look it up. And that's by the senator from Oakland. And I can promise you that even at the project-level density that this South Glendale community plan proposes, it will pale in front of what this proposal is. So I would suggest for you to look at it. And I would also like for you, Ms. Stotler, and whether it's the EIR vendor, to at least give us an opinion of what will happen if this is adopted with its amendments. And it's moving quite with salarity, let's say, right now. Other than that, I think you guys have done a great job in putting everything together. I appreciate going through hundreds and hundreds of pages over the weekend. I can't tell you how thrilling it was. But with that, I will, if there are no other comments, I guess our next point. I'll be part. Please go ahead.
I had a question regarding a topic that hasn't come up. Eventually, we're going to, I think we're going to need a new high school, right? And the way things are looking, it's going to be built in South Glendale. Did you, did anyone reach out to the GUST and see? Because if this is our plan, just imagine the size of the Glendale High School on the map and just overlay it anywhere on this. And it's going to throw a wrench in your wheelworks, right? I would imagine. So I would think that that's a consideration, that much land being taken off the market. They're either going to reverse condemn or something, right? They have to get that land. If they're going to build a high school, they need to purchase that land. Where are they going to buy? And what effect is that going to have on your plan? If we're going to go all the way to 2040, given the fact that right now Glendale High School is filtered to brim, eventually, we're going to need a new school somewhere. And I'm not even going near open space and park space. But we need to do something about that. Anyway, that was my only comment.
Mr. Lee?
This might be a comment more than a question, but I want to comment on, I guess, how this plan was derived from the beginning. You know, a long time ago, I watched Field of Dreams. And it says, you build it, they'll come. So is this aggressive growth and the community plan? Was it, you know, did this come about because of the, you anticipated people moving into Glendale? All these people want to move into wonderful city of Glendale? And then, you know, you have developed this plan? Or is this something that was, you know, I kind of know where the thought process came from, whereas it's more of a, you know, development-oriented? You know, I looked at the plans. I looked at the, it's a wonderful plan. I love it. But the issue is that, you know, when we have a community plan and, you know, the growth of the community has to be responsible. It has to be sustainable. of the community has to be responsible, it has to be sustainable. And, and a very initial question that I asked was that, you know, where's all the mitigating measures here? So that's why I'm going back to the very original, you know, thought process here, is that what, what made this aggressive, you know, plan to be, you know, generated here? So is that something that I don't know if you can answer, or, you know, I know that you got directions from the council to look at this thing here, but where did that come from?
Yeah, actually, actually, your question was a subject of three different study sessions that we had back in 2016, because the council had the same questions. What it started with is, we know that we need to update our land use element, and if you go back far enough, the direction that was given to us is we're going to do community plans, four of them, north, south, east, and west. We started with a North Glendale Community Plan, and that was drafted back in 2008. We completed that project. After that, they said, okay, now we're going to do South Glendale Community Plan. At the time, when we were doing South Glendale, we had a grant to look at the TOD area, Transit Oriented Development. We had a lot of direction coming in. We know we need to have expansion of our transit system. We know we need to have expansion of housing opportunities. Those came from numerous sources, a lot from the state, a lot from regional government. There's a lot of pressure. How do we deal with growth in California on a big picture? How do we move people? And so we have regional housing needs that we need to address in our housing element. We have a transportation center, then the question said, all right, how do we maximize? We know, we know we have these growth issues, where do we put the growth? And the direction a long time ago, the reason we have a DSP is, they said, we're going to put the growth not in the existing residential neighborhoods, we're going to put that growth in downtown. So we started. We still have growth. Where do you accommodate it? We have South Glendale that has a transit center, we have a lot of, and I know it's gone on before, we have east and west connections, north and south connections, we have a transit center down in Tropical. All right, continue that growth pattern. We'll continue the growth pattern down, as you can see, it's probably clearest on Alternative 2, where you can see where it comes down on Central, make that the core, you're tying in your downtown, you're tying it into your transit center. We're looking at putting in other transit alternatives, whether it be a streetcar or trolley, we're putting in the BRT on some of the east and west. For us, that is maximizing a transit network to serve not, not only future populations, but existing ones. We know we have an issue with parking, we know we have an issue with transit, we know there's a huge need that we're not meeting, and we know from the state and all the pressure that we're getting from the state. And like you mentioned, we had 30 different housing over, actually, we had almost 100 different housing bills last year, and 15 made it on the governor's, his list. And we actually are having a meeting on Friday with American Planning, California Planning Association, to talk about the other 30-plus housing bills that are being proposed this year. Those are brand-new, we haven't even looked at all of them. You mentioned one, that's perhaps the most, most egregious for us, that would be S B 827. In fact, the city has, has submitted a letter of concern to the person who drafted the bill. So your answer, we have a lot of growth, where do we put it? Yeah, is it ambitious? Yeah, because that's what growth is cap, that's the growth that's happening in California. How do we move it? How do we address it? We can't address it with a plan that we adopt, a land use element that we adopted back in 1977, or even updated in 1986. It doesn't address today's needs, it's not addressing all the policy implication that we're getting from everywhere. And the city council is, is pressed. As you've said, a lot of the, a lot of the decision-making authority has been stripped from them on how do they do local decision-making because of various state laws. I mean, the most recent one that's very obvious is ADUs. Glendale prohibited ADUs since the idea ever came about. We prohibited granny flats for years. Suddenly, the state said, no, you're having those. Huge impact, neighborhoods all over, all over Glendale. Council didn't necessarily want to adopt it, they didn't have a choice. Now we're having an issue, here's this growth coming, where do we put it? Okay, let's have a strategy, we'll put it along the transit lines, keep it out of the residential neighborhoods, following that direction. It's always been loud and clear from council, they've been very continuous, continuously telling us that. That's why our focus for new growth is on mixed use. Well, do you put mixed use in existing neighborhoods? Or do you put it along corridors that have the potential for expansion, where transit can be expanded? Do you put it in a transit-oriented development area? Because as you're also aware, the state's also adopted standards for transit-oriented development, and that's one of the push that, that's a push that they're having right now. That's your S B 827. And it's not the only bill. There's been other ones periodically over the years that are pushing transit-oriented development. So, I mean, I've kind of given you a long answer to a short question, but it's, it's a complicated problem. It's your council, it's your staff, it's the public struggling with how do we address these impacts on us? And Chap, or Alternative 3 really shows a lot of this externality that's impacting us, high-speed rail, expansion of MetroLink, BRTs through the city. Meanwhile, our population grows, where do we put these people? How do we address this growth? And that's the reason why we're looking at a community plan, we want to know what's going on in these neighborhoods. That's why the vast majority of this plan, when you look at it, it's taken up in Chapter 4, because that's what's going on in the individual neighborhoods. Is it going to have a potential to have significant unavoidable, unmitigatable impact? Yes. And that's why we want to put that out there, that it, an E I R is a disclosure document. We are disclosing that this is what the potential is to hap, to happen. How can we address that? So, you know, I, all I would say is, we're doing our best to disclose it and to, and to provide some alternative, but was this really our idea? Is this something Glendale really wanted? Is this something that came from the city council? Or is this your city council staff trying to deal with policies that are being pushed on us from regional government and from the state? And I think the vast majority of the impact is not coming from Glendale, and the idea is not coming from Glendale, it's how do we react to these other laws? So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Stotler.
So on that, on that note, let me leave you with this thought, because I think we've heard it throughout. Again, I go back to the premise of where is the public benefit? If you don't have parks, you're going to create congestion, we're going to put the, the cart before the horse, right? As far as transportation is concerned. We don't have affordable housing, where is the public benefit for the residents of the city of Glendale? And this E I R needs to reflect those comments, affordability, parks, at whichever level, whether it's no project or Alternative 2 or 3. With that, if you can move forward and adjournment, we can adjourn. Thank you, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.